Morning Mayor, members of council. It's gonna be a great day.
Chaplain Kaufman, good morning. Thank you for being here. Antonio Rodriguez, Salcido, Rivera.
Mayor, Council.
Molinar, good morning everyone and everyone else who's on. Representative Hernandez. Pardon me? How about Lizarga? Okay. Representative Lizarga, good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning ma'am.
Morning.
Representative Nelo, good morning.
Good morning, Dave.
Yes, sir. Good morning Mayor, we do have a quorum to get started.
Please.
Thank you. Good morning, this is a meeting of the El Paso City Council for Tuesday, July 20th, 2021. It is nine o'clock AM. Due to the pandemic, the Texas Governor has temporarily suspended specified provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act to allow video conference or telephonic meetings in order to avoid congregate settings. Mayor Lisa is present and presiding, and we begin the meeting with roll call. Mayor Pro Tem Schwartzwein? Representative Nelo?
Present.
Hernandez? Hernandez?
Here.
Molinar?
Present.
Salcido?
Present.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Rivera?
Here.
Lizarga?
Present.
Thank you, we do have-
I'm here as well.
Thank you Mayor Pro Tem Schwartzwein. We now move to the invocation delivered by Police Chaplain Dennis Kaufman. You're on mute, Chaplain.
Thank you, how's that?
That sounds better, thank you sir.
Okay. Father, thank you for this time that you have allowed these men and women to come together to conduct this business for our city. I pray that you'd give them special wisdom and understanding as they go through this meeting, that they would have your will to be done, that you would give them the guidance and wisdom that they need. And Father, I thank you that you have given us a good city to, a great city to live in. Father, with safety, and I just pray that you would continue to guide each of us, that we might know what it is that you'd want each of us to do. And again, I pray Father for this time, that you would be honored and glorified in it. I thank you for the service and the sacrifice that these men and women have given to conduct this business and to lead our city. And we just pray, Father, that you would give a good time and a good day. Then all is said and done, would be done according to what you would want us to do in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. And now to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance are Isabella Machorro, Olivia Machorro, and Mateo Grijalva at the invitation of Mayor Lisa.
I'm Mr. Mayor. Hi, City Council. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you very, very much. You did a great job. I appreciate you taking the invitation and coming and you all look, thank you, you look great. And you did a great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to the Mayor's Proclamations. The first proclamation is Paul and Stephanie Albright Appreciation Day.
Representative Hernandez.
Good morning. Can everyone hear me okay?
Just ma'am, good morning.
Good morning. The proclamation of the City of El Paso, Texas, whereas Command Sergeant Major retired Paul Albright served in the United States Army for close to thirty years, CSM Albright served as an airborne and air defense soldier, raising to the rank of Command Sergeant Major, CSM, and retiring in 2019 with the 11th Air Defense Artillery Brigade at Fort Bliss, Texas. He oversees deployments include Operation Iraqi Freedom, Operation Enduring Freedom, and Operation Freedom Sentinel. His awards include the Distinguished Service Medal, Notorious Service Medal, and the Army Commendation Medal. Whereas retiring from the United States Army, Command Sergeant Major retired Paul Albright made El Paso, Texas his hometown with his wife Stephanie and his children. Paul applied for the position of the City, El Paso City Veteran Service Officer with huge support of the veterans and the community. Paul was selected and started this position in 2019. And whereas in 2020, CSM Albright coordinated efforts between El Paso's veterans, the community, and numerous nonprofits which greatly helped in the collection and distribution of food, clothing, water, and medical supplies during the COVID-19 pandemic. His efforts have earned him the respect of the El Paso community. And whereas in 2020, during the COVID-19 pandemic, CSM Albright helped coordinate efforts between the Texas Army National Guard, the Alabama Army National Guard, and the El Paso Veterans and Riders Association to help collect much-needed food, water, and medical supplies for successful and rapid distribution to El Paso's rural communities. Over eighty thousand pounds of much-needed supplies were distributed. And whereas Stephanie Albright has become an active member in support of her husband's effort and her community, she has joined various veterans and community efforts which have earned her the respect of our veterans, their spouses, and the community. Stephanie provides valuable insight and support to other spouses and helps add that special touch into operations. And now therefore be it proclaimed by the Mayor and Council of the City of El Paso that July 20th, 2021 shall be known as Paul and Stephanie Albright Appreciation Day. Signed by Honorable Mayor Oscar Lisa. Congratulations, Mr. Albright.
Thank you Representative Hernandez and Paul and Stephanie, thank you for your service to our country. And thank you both for choosing El Paso as your home. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next proclamation is Latino Conservation Week.
Good morning, this is Representative Molinar. Proclamation, City of El Paso, whereas Latino Conservation Week was created by the Hispanic Access Foundation to support the Latino communities getting into the outdoors and participate in activities to protect our natural resources. And whereas during this month, Latino community and faith-based organizations across the United States will go on hiking or camping outings in national conservation lands, national monuments, and parks, and other public lands, learn about conservation efforts in their communities and show their support for permanently protecting our land, water, and air. And whereas, Caser Range comprises 7,081 acres of far west Texas beauty and has historical significance that dates back thousands of years and tells the story of how our region ended up becoming the world's largest by national community. And whereas, local organizations including the Fronteira Land Alliance are once again seeking to designate Caser Range as a national monument to promote equity and access to the outdoors. And whereas, national monument designations celebrate communities' contributions to this country, contribute to local economies, and provide beautiful spaces for outdoor recreation. And whereas, we support these priorities because we believe it's a moral obligation to protect our natural resources and heritage for future generations. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Mayor and Council of the City of El Paso that July 19th through July 25th, 2021 shall be known as Latino Conservation Week. Signed the Honorable Oscar Lisa, Mayor for the City of El Paso. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Council. Please remember to keep your cameras on for the duration of the meeting to ensure a quorum is maintained. If you need technical assistance, please notify me. If you would like to speak, please notify the Mayor. And per Robert's rules, once you obtain the floor, you will have up to ten minutes. Staff, please turn on your cameras when presenting or speaking. Everyone else, please mute your microphones to reduce any background noise. That brings us to the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda will be considered by City Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless separate discussion is requested by Council members. Prior to the vote, members of the audience may ask questions regarding items on the Consent Agenda. When the vote has been taken, if an item has not been called off for separate discussion, the item has been approved. Council may however reconsider any item at any time during the meeting.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, I'd like to make the following revision. Page thirteen, item twenty-six, delete per planning and inspections.
Do we have a second?
There is a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda as revised. On that motion, Mayor Pro Tem Schwartzwein.
Aye.
Representative Nelo?
Aye.
Hernandez? Molinar?
Aye.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Lizarga?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Representative Hernandez not present, she's experiencing some technical difficulties. That brings us to page six, to the first reading of ordinances. These are items seventeen to nineteen. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the first reading of ordinances. These are items nineteen, seventeen to nineteen. On that motion, Mayor Pro Tem Schwartzwein?
Yep.
Representative Nelo?
Aye.
Hernandez? Molinar?
Aye.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Lizarga?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Representative Hernandez not present. The next item is number twenty. This is discussion and action on the Award of Solicitation 2021-1200 Liz Moraima Park Improvements to Horizon Construction Limited. Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve item number twenty. On that motion, Mayor Pro Tem Schwartzwein?
Aye.
Representative Nelo?
Aye.
Hernandez? Molinar?
Aye.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Lizarga?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. Representative Hernandez not present. The next item is number twenty-one. This is discussion and action on the Award of Solicitation 2021-1206 Wainwright and Northeast Basin Park Improvements to Martinez Brothers Contractors LLC.
Can we get a presentation on this item, please?
Good morning Mayor and Council, this is Jared Jimura, IT. Can you pull up the presentation, please? Thank you, IT. So this project is a quality of life, is a quality of life project for improvements to the Northeast Basin and Wainwright Parks. Next slide, please. Wainwright Park is located at 4520 Lawrence Avenue. Northeast Basin Park is on Cross Street between Sun Valley. The projects are in Districts Two and Four. The total budget is 1.1 million and it's funded with quality of life funds. Next slide, please. Wainwright Park, it'll be a new city park with a playground, walking trail, sports court, benches, and trash receptacles. Phase two will be the future expansion of a walking trail and I'm sorry, my screen's blocked. One second. A walking trail and additional landscaped areas. Northeast Basin Park is essentially a hike and bike trail along Cross Street between Sun Valley Drive and Deer Avenue. The trail will be supplemented by trees, benches, and trash receptacles. Next slide, please.
Mr. Jimura, you're on mute, sir.
I'm sorry. Where did I, where did I leave off? I'm sorry.
The previous slide.
Okay, can you back up one slide, please? Okay, so this is the location of Wainwright Park. You can see Lawrence Avenue, Deer Avenue, and T-Town's Drive. Next slide, please. This is the location of the Northeast Basin Improvements along Cross Street. Next slide, please. These are the existing conditions of Wainwright Park. Next slide, please. The existing conditions of Northeast Basin Park. Next slide, please. This is a site plan for Wainwright Park. You can see the phase one area is here. Phase two is down here. There's a playground and sports court here and landscaped and greened areas. Next slide, please. This is the rendering for the Northeast Basin, basically trail. You can see the cross section of the streets with trees, walking trail, and lighting. Next slide, please. The procurement method, the solicitation was advertised on April 27th and May 4th. Five firms submitted bids, five local vendors. The recommendation is to award the construction contract to Martinez Brothers Contractors in the amount of 752,000. We intend to start construction this summer and be completed by the spring of 2022. That's my end of my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. We do have Representative Molinar.
Good morning Mayor, thank you very much. Yes, a couple of questions. If you could go back to slide four, sir. Thank you. So this depicts the Wainwright Park, however, on the right side of the screen, on my screen, it says Deer Street. I believe that should be Dire Street. Just a misspelling of that. That needs to be corrected for the public's information as well. Another couple of things, so this is being awarded to one vendor, however, do, have they decided, is this gonna be a project being completed both at the same time, or is it one gonna start in District Two first and then District Four, or how's that gonna work out, or do you know?
Right now Representative, I do not know, but I can find out that information and get back to you.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you Representative Molinar. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Jimura, for a great presentation. Looks like a wonderful project, much needed, and an important part of our community. Do you, is, just for the public's information, is phase one and phase two being built at this point? And if not, when is the schedule and timeline for both phases?
Phase one will be constructed this summer. Phase two will be constructed when funding is available.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you Mayor Pro Tem. With that, we have a motion and a second.
No, sir, there's no motion yet.
No.
Move to approve?
Thank you. There is a motion and a second to approve item number twenty-one. On that motion, Mayor Pro Tem Schwartzwein?
Aye.
Representative Nelo?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Molinar?
Aye.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Lizarga?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. The next item is number twenty-two. This is discussion and action on the Award of Solicitation Number 2021-0806R Benefit Consulting Services to Hub International Texas, Inc. Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve item number twenty-two. On that motion, Mayor Pro Tem Schwartzwein?
Aye.
Representative Nelo?
No.
Hernandez?
No.
Molinar?
Nay.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Nay.
Lizarga?
Aye.
And the motion fails with Representative Schwartzwein, Nelo, Hernandez, Molinar, Rivera voting nay, Representative Salcido, Rodriguez, Lizarga voting aye, the motion fails.
Next item, please.
The next item is number twenty-three. This is discussion and action on the Award of Solicitation 2021-0811 Job Order Contracting and Facilities Construction to Alpha Building Corporation and Billy's Company LLC. Move to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve item number twenty-three. On that motion, Mayor Pro Tem Schwartzwein?
Aye.
Representative Nelo?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Molinar?
Aye.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Lizarga?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. The next item is number twenty-four. This is discussion and action on the Award of Solicitation 2021-0509 Airport Rapid Transit Systems, RTS to Mirador Enterprises, Inc.
Do you have a presentation on this?
Move to approve?
Second.
He, Rivera Hernandez, one of our colleagues, you can please bring up the presentation. Thank you. Next slide, please. The scope of work for the station located at our El Paso Airport is a main closed station. This will be constructed in support of the Montana RTS Transit System that is currently underway and in construction. This station will consist of a climate-controlled building, as you see in the rendering to your left, pedestrian lighting, new sidewalks, landscaping, bicycle racks, and then we also have artwork for the station. Next slide. The location of this new station will be at the International Airport. This will be on Convair Road in front of the Conrak. Next slide. The procurement summary, it was advertised on December 8th and the 15th. Three firms submitted, submitted bids. They were all local firms. The recommendation for award is for Mirador Enterprises for an estimated amount of 1.3 million dollars. The funding sources are, this is a federal project as it is in support of the Montana RTS program. So there are federal funds, which are the FTA funds, and then we will also be utilizing 2021 COs. Next slide. Are there any questions at this time? We'll be open for questions.
Representative, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, is there a way we can bring a Google map to get a better sense of where, you said this is already being currently constructed at this point?
No, sir. This is in support of the Montana RTS project. Along Montana, so those smaller stations are already being constructed. I apologize. This one, pending approval, will then be constructed.
Yeah, if you could bring up a Google map or some sort of aerial that is a little bit more in detail. I'm trying to understand exactly how far away this is from the main terminal, because it looks like it's almost a quarter mile away from baggage claim or something. I'm trying to understand how far somebody that is, that is arriving into our airport would have to walk to the, to this, to this area.
Mayor Pro Tem, Sam Rodriguez, Director of the Airport, are you able to see my screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the proposed location will be right at this corner of Convair Road and Terminal Drive. I know the exhibit showed it on Convair Road, a little bit further out, but the actual location is gonna be here. So this is, as you come out of the terminal, as this is your baggage claim area. This is where all our taxis,
Yes, sir.
shuttles and Uber, everybody picks up, the Conrak is sort of here. They will be located at this location here.
Do you have any images of the front that somebody might see when they were leaving the baggage claim or anything like that? Zoom it up and be fairly good.
Yeah, so as you drive out, as you walk out of your, with your luggage, you're gonna come out of these doors here, and as you come out, you're gonna see the terminal right here with the brillo, the pylon that you saw in the rendering, and the building will be located at this location.
Do you have any other, any other renderings of it? I don't know if you can bring back the, I think there was one rendering in this presentation. I don't know if y'all have any others to share with it?
Yes, sir.
Wait a minute.
Yes, sir, we do have additional renderings and I can provide that to you. So it is similar to the brills, like Mr. Rodriguez said, it will have a pylon, it will be lit with orange as well. It would be really well identified, and then also, as Nate mentioned, the Lyft and Uber will also be identified within that area. But I can provide additional renderings.
And you mentioned that it'll be, it'll be an indoor facility as well?
Yes, sir, it'll be an air-conditioned facility, and also climate-controlled, and also heating in the winter.
Okay, I would, I would just say it in terms of, in terms of the design and working on it. I know that we already have closer towards the departure areas, a lot of sort of benches and concrete benches that are shaded for people to sit in. I just would hope that, given, given everything that we've learned with COVID, that there's, there's ample outdoor seating incorporated into the final design for this facility for those that are waiting and they can choose to wait outside, especially if it's, if it's shaded seating as well in terms of the design of the facility. That way, even if the facility is closed for a bus service, it's still be able to sit.
Yes, sir. The additional renderings that we have, we do have ample overhang of the roof which does provide additional shape. But I can make sure to select a rendering that does illustrate that.
Okay. And there'll be outdoor, outdoor seating as well for that, benches or otherwise?
I don't know.
Yeah, there will be, the Convair Road improvements that we just completed does have benches and seating all throughout that corridor. In addition, as she stated, this will be the designated Uber and Lyft pickup zones as well. So there'll be ample wayfinding to get folks to this location as well as the brillo. And then there will be benches and seating. This will be the beginning, obviously, of our redevelopment of this area. This is the old rental car facility area that was vacated, that we're working on development plans for this area as well. So all that will become pedestrian with benches, pedestrian area with benches that will be the beginning of the development as well.
Okay, yeah, because I think it's really important, especially with the, with a facility like this, that that, again, with, with an overhang like that and the design rendering, at least what we see, that be able to incorporate some public seating and outdoor seating as well, I think would be a very good step in support of multimodal transit. The final question I had is, can you talk a little bit more about the public art component for this? Was it, you know, one of the most successful public art pieces I think we had is the, the the river that ran through the baggage claim, and that was a really great crowdsourced public art piece with quotes from different El Pasoans. Are we doing something similar like that with that theme of the airport, or is this already been finalized? And if so, what, can you speak a little bit more about the public art component of this?
It is, it is complimentary. It doesn't carry on the exact same river theme. It's more so large structures to really indicate that there is a station there. I believe one is like a child plane, and so they are located on either side of, of the station.
So it's glorified wayfinding?
Yes.
No, sir. These are sculptures that are being built and I fortunately can't, I don't have them in front of me, but we can send you a rendering of those. They were selected through the public art program through MCAD, but they are large sculptures that depict, they're gonna be interactive, that depict, I believe, a child in an airplane, but they're pretty interactive and large sculptures that we can send you a rendering of.
Yeah, that'd be great. I think, you know, anytime we have an opportunity to really engage the public, I think that, again, that I don't know the exact term. I know Ben Fife would be upset that I don't know the title for the river that ran through the baggage claim department by Mitsu Overstreet, but it's such a successful piece because you see people all the time looking at quotes, taking pictures of their quotes, posting them online on social media. I think we had a missed opportunity when we redid the sort of walking path into the short and long-term parking with some of the words that we added. So I just think that when we have those opportunities to crowdsource and engage the public and our public art design is always a great opportunity, especially at the airport. And so I'm hoping that moving forward with some of the thinking further about the redesign with the airport, that we can think outside the box with some of those more crowdsourced opportunities for public art.
Representative, if I may, Tracy Jerome, Deputy City Manager, Quality of Life. Just to remind the public, all of the public art is very much a publicly engaging process. We never bring these projects in a vacuum. And so not only do we have a committee that oversees and works with the public, but there is a lot of public input that is provided, and we appreciate your continued support for the engagement of the community. Public art truly should be public and it is. The process works. And I feel that we are very fortunate, this community, that we have such great support from council to make sure that we continue to engage the community in the way that we do. And we'll make sure that you get more information about that specific project.
And I recognize too, this goes to the MCAD Committee, which is all, you know, housed by the public. It's all our recommendations of people that we appoint. It goes to the public art committee. You know, what I'm, and I recognize that, and that is a very public-facing part of our public art program. What I'm specifically referring to is, again, with that piece by Mitsu Overstreet that actually had, you know, a website and a link that people could submit their quotes about what they love about El Paso, about what they miss about El Paso, about what they love about their home, which was a really inspiring and a very simple yet profound sort of idea. And the execution with Mitsu and with MCAD was really great. And so I think that kind of opportunity, when it presents itself, whether it's a concrete stamping or, you know, two-foot words that is along a walking path to our parking area down in El Paso, in the airport, is something we should always look at doing further. And so I know we have a great, award-winning public art program, but I know that we're also a constantly evolving and improving organization, as our city manager says as well. And so I'm really excited with this Brio stop. I think it's in a great, very visible place that hopefully if somebody comes in and arrives, their second or third time they're coming in, maybe they'll decide to take the bus as well because it'll be so easy and to get on to. So, Mayor, that's all my questions. Thank you again, Ms. Jerome, and thank you again, you grab and soon.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Representative Molinar?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to make sure I understand this. So let's say a person gets off a plane, picks up their bags, walks outside, and they go to the the place there to pick up the bus. The bus will then take them to the Montana Brio once that's completed. And then how does that person choose to go east or west? Does that bus take them to the main headquarters there for the Sun Metro, and then they connect it with another bus? Or they, how does that work?
This is the outbound and the inbound station, Representative Molinar. So folks that come in here will be able to go east to the Montana RTS Transfer Center that's located in RCPO, or they'll be able to go west to downtown, and their destination for this line is at the Five Points Transfer Center, to which they'll be able to board the Dyer or go into the downtown area as part of the connecting to the Dyer system, the connection to the Dyer system.
Okay, so going east would be RCPO and going west would be the Five Points?
Correct.
And they would have to just pick and choose whichever one, when they got off the plane, when they arrived, and what's coming next?
Correct.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Representative Molinar.
Mayor Protem, I do have the rendering of the art piece. If I can share with my screen here, one minute. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the art piece that is the child depicting, they're taking flight. That'll be located at the corner to supplement the rendering of the Brio Station. You can see the seating outside that you guys spoke of. And then, of course, the, on the backside of this will be, on the backside of the building is where the Uber and Lyft will be picking up as well. So we're getting folks into this pickup zone so folks can wait in the conditioned space and the area back here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
Is the mayor?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, sir. So the pickup would be on the other side of that rock wall or it'd be on the other side of the Brio Station?
The pickup is back here, so the cars are gonna line up back here, but folks that come and use Uber and Lyft will be through this platform, and then the vehicles will be behind them in this back area. And then there'll be ample wayfinding to get people to this, to the location. But this whole pedestrian corridor here will be for Uber and Lyft on the backside. The Brio will be on the front side.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And without Ms. Prine?
Yes, Mayor, there is a motion and a second to approve item number twenty-four. On that motion, Mayor Protem Schwartzwein.
Yes.
Representative Anello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Molinar?
Nay.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Lizarga?
Aye.
And the motion passes with seven affirmative votes. Representative Molinar voting nay, the motion does pass. The next item is number twenty-five, and this is a public hearing on a ordinance granting a special permit to allow for a forty-foot ground-mounted personal wireless service facility at fifty-nine zero one Upper Valley Road.
Can I see a presentation on that, please?
Yes, good morning, Mayor and Council. Kevin Smith with plenty inspections. Let me share my screen. Okay, before I go through the presentation, I do have a statement I'd like to read into the record. Pursuant to the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six and before we discuss this item, is important to know that no local government may deny the placement, construction, or modification of personal wireless service facilities on the basis of potential radio frequency health effects. So this item is a special permit request for a personal wireless service facility or PWSF item for fifty-nine oh one Upper Valley Road. This is an appeal of a CPC recommendation of denial. It is located at fifty-nine zero one Upper Valley, about half a mile south of Art Craft. It is located in R-two zoning district, and due to the fact it is in a residential zoning district, requires a special permit and city council approval for placement. This is a half-mile buffer showing the location there in the blue dot there in the middle with service facilities in the area. There are none located within half a mile. And looking a little bit further out, the closest service facilities in the city are about one point seven miles away is the closest, located near the intersection of I-ten and Art Craft. This is a detailed site plan showing the existing property, the property with the proposed location of the cell tower. The area in red there is the proposed tower. This is an elevation showing the PWSF tower camouflaged as a forty-foot tall steeple for the church. As one of the requirements is for some simulations, these are different vantage points showing it. This is from looking south. For all these slides, the picture on the left shows the existing conditions. The picture on the right is a photo simulation showing the proposed tower concealed as part of the structure. So this is looking south. This is looking west. This is looking north. And this is looking east. This is a photo of the subject property, currently a church. And this are the surrounding developments for it, to the areas to the north, to the west, and to the south. Our single-family developments, zoned R-two. To the east, across the street from Upper Valley, is owned Ranch Farm, is undeveloped, and there is farmland activities, agriculture activities occurring right now. Notices have been provided to residents within five hundred feet as required per code. In response to those, we have received five phone calls, a petition with eighty-three signatures, as well as thirteen letters via email in opposition to the special permit request. We did receive one letter via email in support of the this item. With that, staff does recommend approval of the special permit request as it meets all requirements of the PWSF Special Permit and Detailed Site Plan. CPC did recommend denial of this item from a four-to-one vote. And again, this item, for your consideration, is an appeal of that recommendation. With that, that concludes the presentation. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Yeah, we have Representative Anello followed by Mayor Protem. Representative Anello?
Hi, thank you, Kevin. Thank you for the presentation. Can you clarify on what grounds the losses that we can deny a cell tower appeal?
You can or can't? I'm sorry. Can?
Which grounds that we can deny?
So with that, typically for denial is, from my understanding and legal, probably jump in, but it has to be in violation of the city code. So usually, as per staff, we would identify a specific provision of the code that it did not meet, and
Well, but this is a special permit, right? The code allows for thirty-five foot. But my understanding is that community concern is a valid reason for denial.
I would defer that to legal.
This is Russell A. Blinn, Assistant City Attorney. Yes, there are situations in which public comment could be, public concern could be used in our denial as a factor.
Okay, thank you, sir. So I just wanted to be absolutely clear about that. I appreciate it. Thank you both.
No problem.
Thank you, Representative, Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you again for the presentation. I was wondering if there's any public comment at this time?
Yes, sir, we have, we have ten people signed up for public comment. Go ahead, Ms. Prine?
Yes, sir, we will have, we'll start with Ms. Beatriz Garza, followed by Stephen Kennedy, Bev Francis, and Jimmy Bustamante. Ms. Beatriz Garza, you'll have three minutes, ma'am. Star six will unmute your telephone. Ms. Garza, star six, please, to unmute your telephone. Ms. Beatriz Garza? We'll move to Mr. Stephen Kennedy. Mr. Stephen Kennedy, star six, to unmute your telephone. Thank you. Good morning, you'll have three minutes.
Yes, ma'am. I have two slides on part of the deck that's shown for the site being proposed. So this, I'm a representative of APC Towers, a consultant, two APC Towers, a consultant to Verizon Wireless. This site has been requested or has been needed since twenty sixteen. It is now twenty twenty-one, and we still don't have a site. Verizon has a significant gap in coverage and quality and capacity. The slides that were given would show that there's not enough coverage for in-building penetration as well as all of the mobility traffic, the mobile traffic that's moving around in the area. This site is significantly needed. There are sites within one point seven miles to two and a half miles surrounding this area, but there's nothing in the area. So this site is definitely needed because, as you all know, and probably everyone on the council and the mayors have mobile phones, as well as everybody that lives in the area, it's quite predominant. Eighty percent of all nine-one-one calls are made from a mobile device. There's not enough coverage and capacity in this area. This site is desperately needed. If the mayor and council were to not approve, it would materially inhibit Verizon Wireless's ability to provide service within this area. The site has been designed to blend with the surrounding area, and it is desperately needed to provide good quality, coverage, and service to the area. Thank you.
The next speaker is Bev Francis, followed by Jimmy Bustamante and Terry Bustamante. Mr. Francis, star six, please, to unmute your telephone.
Yes, I'm sorry, this was deputies. I was having a hard time on meeting.
Mr. Francis?
Yes, ma'am.
You'll have three minutes, sir, thank you.
Before I start, we have submitted in, I'm the attorney for APC, we submitted in a presentation. And can we bring that presentation up, please?
Yes, IT, will you please bring up the presentation from the applicant?
Thank you.
Mr. Francis, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Well, yeah. Okay. Mayor and representatives, I'm Bev Francis, one twelve East McConaughey in San Antonio. I'm the attorney for APC Towers, which is a national developer telecommunication facilities. And in the short period of time I have with you, I want to discuss with you, and answer the question previously raised, is the effect that the Telecom Act, the September twenty eighteen FCC Order and federal court law and determination will have on your decision to approve or deny this application. And as I'm sure the legal department has shared with you, a decision to deny this application must be supported by substantial evidence. And the cases have concluded that here are community concern, questions about aesthetics, character, and so forth. These generalized questions will not fulfill the requirement for substantial evidence. And once additionally, Kevin presented to you the point that in making your determination, the Telecommunications Act specifically says you cannot take into consideration radio frequency emissions, if any. One final point I'd like to ask before you take your vote is to please look at the photo simulations. And what you will see is that the steeple, you will not see the tower, you do not see the antennas. So all questions regarding community concern aesthetic relate to the steeple. It doesn't relate to the PWSF, which is a low-visibility structure, since it cannot be seen. And in fact, in reality, the church could go this afternoon to your development department, file a building application to build this exact steeple at this height without the tower, without the PWSF, and receive administrative review and approval. So the question would be, on what basis would this application be denied since the structure itself encompasses the tower and it is a low-visibility facility? Therefore, a decision of denial would be an effective provision of Verizon's service. So in conclusion, as Steve Kennedy has indicated as our expert, there is a gap in Verizon's voice and data services. There are no, as you will see in the presentation we presented, alternative sites available. And the city has not proposed or located a suitable low-intensity site or low-availability site that would be appropriate for this project. The courts have determined that in order to be an alternative site, it has to be what they call the ABLES, locatable, buildable, developable, zonable. None of that has been presented, and therefore we have met the burden. In conclusion, the February
Mr. Francis, you've reached the three-minute limit, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mr. Jimmy Bustamante, followed by Terry Bustamante and The next speaker is Mr. Jimmy Bustamante, followed by Terry Bustamante and Rita Robles. Mr. Bustamante, star six, please, to unmute your telephone. Jimmy Bustamante?
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Good morning. You have three minutes, sir.
Yes, good morning, Honorable Mayor and City Council Reps. To start off with, my name is Jimmy Bustamante, and my family and I do live in El Paso, in the Upper Valley, not like Mr. Kennedy, who represents APC. He lives in Albuquerque. And the attorney, he lives in San Antonio. So you're talking to a resident. My wife and I and our family moved to the Upper Valley to have a country-style living, and to get away from the hustle and bustle of the city life. We have a beautiful view of the Franklin Mountains from our home. Now, the Reyes Church, located in front of us, wants Verizon to install a 40-foot cell tower, which would be higher than any home in the Upper Valley, and would block all the Upper Valley neighbors' view of the beautiful Franklin Mountains. This would be an eyesore to our Upper Valley neighborhood. The Reyes Church is located in our Upper Valley neighborhood, but is not part of our Upper Valley community. The members of the Reyes Church do not live in the Upper Valley, but live in other parts of El Paso and Wadis. The church has not been a good neighbor to the Upper Valley community. On account the church has never ministered in our neighborhood, and when some of our Upper Valley neighbors lost their jobs due to the pandemic, the church never offered to bring them food, fellowship to their families. The church itself is an eyesore, as they have worn out buildings and canvases covering their roofs. In 2018, the same church wanted to install a cell tower that was defeated by El Paso Planning Commission and the City Council. And once again, the churches during the pandemic wants to install the tower in 2021. Since the church has lost members due to the pandemic, the church wants Verizon to give a monthly revenue for having the cell tower on their property, which isn't even classified as a commercial zone, and the church is listed as a non-profit organization. Verizon has many locations north of I-10 where they can install their cell tower. The only difference is, like MIMCO, they want more revenue from Verizon, whereas the church is hard up for money, so they don't, they low-ball their bid to Verizon, so they could get the cell tower. My wife and I personally spoke with Pastor Reyes about the cell tower, and I asked if I could speak to his board of directors, and he said yes. Then he never returned my calls to set up an appointment. My wife talked to his son-in-law, Andy, who's behind all this cell tower, and he hung up on her. That's not very Christian, and that's not very being neighborly. Verizon does not need to install a cell tower in the Upper Valley neighborhood. The neighbors have no problems with their cell phone coverage. Verizon is corporate America. They want the tower so they can lease their towers to other cell phone companies. Please, Mayor and City Council Reps, vote no to the cell tower. The El Paso Planning Commission has already voted against the cell tower, thanks to Andrew. The Upper Valley neighbors want to thank District 1 Rep Peter for all his hard work and expertise in defeating the cell tower. Be safe, my friends. Thank you for being a good steward of El Paso taxpayers' money.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mrs. Terry Bustamante. She will be followed by Rita Robles and Chris Robles. Good morning, Ms. Bustamante. You have three minutes, ma'am.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Thank you so much for allowing us to speak this morning. We're very passionate of how we feel about this cell tower. It has no business right in the middle of our beautiful neighborhood. I've lived in El Paso all my life, and I've lived in different parts of the cities. And the Upper Valley is far the most beautiful area of El Paso that I have ever lived in. There's multiple reasons why we don't want this cell tower in our neighborhood. As my husband mentioned, it is an eyesore. And people do not want to purchase homes near cell towers. Okay? So our resale opportunity is at stake here as well. People move out here because of the beauty, and the church members are there maybe two to three times a week. We know that people come and use their soccer fields. Again, none of these people reside in our beautiful community. None of us, those people are united like we are as neighbors. You know, we pay high taxes here in the Upper Valley, and we do that so our family can enjoy this beautiful community. And we pray and we hope that you, you, Mayor, and the council people preserve it for years to come, for future generations, for kids, for grandkids. Please don't let corporate America take over and make decisions that do not impact their lives. Please, please pray and search your hearts for the right decision. And for once and for all, let's, let's stop this. This, we just went through this in April, and in 2018, you guys didn't want this. So please, please, help these people maybe find a better suited location for the cell tower. There are lots of commercial areas where this cell, cell tower can go. They just need to do a better job of looking for a better place to install this cell tower that is not wanted or needed in our beautiful Upper Valley. And Jesus holy name I pray that the right decision be made. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll remind the public to please refrain from using personal attacks during their comments. The next speaker is Ms. Rita Robles. She will be followed by Chris Robles and Carlos Garza. Good morning, Ms. Robles. You have three minutes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Rita Robles, and I live within 250 feet of the proposed telephone, cell phone tower. I spoke out two years ago at the City Council meeting in opposition to this tower. Gratefully, you voted it down. I also spoke at the Planning Commission meeting in April in opposition. Gratefully, the Planning Commission did not approve it then either. I'm here with you today to voice my very strong opposition to putting a cell tower in our residential zone. I canvassed streets in my neighborhood in April when the cell phone tower issue came up before the Planning Commission. In that time, going door-to-door, not one individual, not one, said, oh, goody, a cell phone tower in the neighborhood, I can't wait. Not one. It is unanimous in our neighborhood that the cell tower, for a large number of reasons, is completely unwanted and unfitting. Cell phone towers should not be placed in established, residentially-zoned neighborhoods or public places, such as parks or libraries. Verizon is a multimillion-dollar, billion-dollar company with high-powered attorneys and is capable of affording its own space on a property already commercially zoned. There are plenty of choices in the vicinity. There are two spots at Upper Valley and Art Craft, Upper Valley and Country Club, Donovan and Country Club, Upper Valley and Art Craft, Upper Valley, excuse me, Gomez and Westside Drive, where, by the way, the Planning Commission approved in April a new residential development. There's plenty of sprawling space on the New Mexico side of Country Club, where no residential space will be affected. Verizon doesn't wish to spend more money, so it will instead reach into our neighborhood's pockets by lowering our home values. Lowered home values means less for the city coffers. The Planning Commission and City Council have previously spoken about smart planning for neighborhoods. Why not consider cell towers in those new designs, where the towers can be built without being intrusive to the neighborhood, and everyone buying into the neighborhood will know what they're buying into right off the bat? We are a very well-established neighborhood. The tower would be an imposition to us, not a smart plan, but an entirely forced, unwanted advance on a middle-class neighborhood. I'm a Verizon customer. I would rather throw my phone in the river than have a cell phone tower hovering over my neighbors and me. The church members do not live in the neighborhood. It would affect not a single one of them, 24/7, only us. If the raid or Reyes Church sold, the cell tower would remain. Jesus knew the full meaning and import of the craft. Its purpose was certainly not camouflage for an unwanted cell phone tower. The entire, the idea, the entire idea is completely disgusting. Our neighborhood will not stop fighting the cell tower in this location. If Verizon believes this is the path of least resistance, they can, I can assure the company, it absolutely is not. Please, as representatives of the people who live here, not as representatives of Verizon, vote this imposition down forever. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mr. Chris Robles. He will be followed by Carlos Garza and Susan Martinez. Good morning, Mr. Robles. You have three minutes, sir.
Okay, I'm on.
Good morning.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. My name is Chris Robles. I reside at 716 Al Smith and the affected subdivision of the proposed cell tower at the Reyes Reyes Church. I'm strongly opposed to the special permit requested by the church, Verizon, and Romero and Associates LLC. I was opposed three years ago when the first special permit was granted by the Planning Commission, and I spoke during the public portion of the City Council meeting that voted down the measure. Though the cell tower design has changed, it's still an eyesore, will block our view of the mountains, and only benefits the church. The church is the only one that benefits monetarily from this situation. They'll be making money every month for the use of their land for this tower. It's disappointing that they have never reached out to us, yet are well aware that the neighborhood opposes this monstrosity. Their neighbors do not live in our neighborhood, so they don't have to see this every day. There are several suitable locations in this area in commercial zone properties. For Verizon, Romero Associates LLC, would have to spend more money to place a tower in these locations. It's as simple as that. They'll pay the church a fraction of the cost. There's a probable loss of property values. Most people do not want to live next to a cell phone tower. We sell our homes, the view of the tower at the end of the street make it much more difficult. We may consider hiring attorneys and asking for lower property taxes based on this if it is approved. The new design is just as bad as the original design. You can cover up what it is. A cell tower is a cell tower. Photos of these disguised cell towers posted on the internet are laughable. The Verizon attorney from San Antonio said we can't mention health concerns, so I won't. Mr. Leeser, I voted for you. Would you want this in your backyard? Do any council members have a cell tower 250 feet from their house? I'm sure the Verizon attorney from San Antonio doesn't have one in his backyard. If you look at the internet, this problem with churches wanting to put cell phone towers on their property against neighbors, which is, is not unique. It's a shame. And yes, my cell phone works just fine, all of our phones work just fine throughout the city. This is no desperate struggle that Verizon's putting on that if this doesn't happen, oh, it's all gonna fall apart. So I won't say the word I'm thinking to describe that. That's not true. There are many places right down the street. They just don't want to pay the money for it, and this is a path of least resistance. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mr. Carlos Garza, followed by Susan Martinez, Nicholas Romano, and Beatriz Garza. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Garza. You have three minutes.
Hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Just a couple of things, and I thank you for your time, and appreciate your attention to this. As it came out back in March, I just kind of found it that they would go after the cell tower permit again. I kind of find that unethical, because at that time, we had the pandemic going full blast, and people were, you know, definitely having to stay at home and not get with other folks, and that made it hard for our neighborhood. But we found some very good folks that actually, including myself, went out to solicit signatures, solicit, provide information on the cell tower, and actually had it denied at the Planning Committee. And unfortunately, you know, it got appealed, and now we're back at this issue. So I think, you know, Verizon slash APC are just looking for the path of least resistance on this. As they say, the tower would not impede any view, but if you go on Al Smith Drive, you will see as the tower goes up, it's gonna block their beautiful view of the mountains. And that's, that's one thing, the reasons we moved out is the view of the mountains, the horses, the beautiful air, everything that we have out here. As has been stated before, there's no members that live in this neighborhood. But one thing I do have to question of the churches is, if you're a member of a devout Christian church, you would go out and witness and minister to folks and try to save their souls. But I've yet to have any of them come to minister to me, and they're just, they're less than 500 feet away from me. So that's one, one issue I have, that I have. And like I said, like, I just ask and hope that you find it in your heart to deny this permit again, and I thank you very much for your time and your attention.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Susan Martinez. She will be followed by Nicholas Romano and Beatriz Garza. Good morning, Ms. Martinez.
Good morning.
Good morning. I just need to give you my, my, my feelings on cell phone towers. And I know that you guys are using the Federal Communications Law that came up in 1996. Everybody think about that. This law was written in 1996. It's telling us that we cannot use health information as defense to stop a cell phone tower from going in to a residential area. How much have you learned on anything since 1996? That law needs to be changed. Second of all, what do you know about the effect of residential property values with reference to cell phone towers? We need to know how residential property values are going to be affected. Because I can tell you right now, speaking for myself and people that I've asked, if they were to move into a neighborhood, and I don't care how nice the neighborhood is, if there is a cell phone tower anywhere close, they are not going to want to buy. So I am waiting for the Board of Realtors and also the open records folks at the city to send me information on impact of cell phone towers to residential property values. You guys need to change the law, first of all, for the safety of everybody. And a whole bunch of information has come out now since 1996. You have a responsibility to do that. You have a fabulous industry. You are making money hand over fist, and you are coming to residential property owners and offering them money, especially people who have rundown lots. And it doesn't matter what the effect is gonna be on the rest of the neighborhood. And you have a responsibility to look into that. So I ask City Council to please deny these requests until we get more information. Please, we don't want to be looking at a problem that's down the road, we're gonna find out all these crazy things affecting our health, and we're gonna find out about property values going down and everything else. And you have neighbors who are paying their taxes, keeping up their property, and they're gonna be affected by that. Something needs to be done for the residential property owner. Thank you very much. Please deny this request.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mr. Nicholas Romano. He will be followed by Beatriz Garza. Good morning, Mr. Romano. You have three minutes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Nick Romano. I am the representative of the applicant. I thought we were gonna have a chance earlier to present, but could we queue up before my time starts, the presentation, the applicant's presentation on slide number nine? Is that possible?
IT is bringing that up, sir. Okay, sir. Item, slide nine is on the screen now.
Okay. I'd like to just speak directly to what the city code requires with regard to these facilities. In 2020, the city, this, this body passed a new ordinance with regulation, which established a hierarchy of preferences, obviously promoting co-location and non-residential properties. However, when that is not possible, the city did include a process for justifying a site in a residential area. That process, that, though, that code states that candidates be looked at within 500 feet, not a half mile, not more than that. So when we talk about alternate options, the city itself has defined 500 feet as the requirement for, for reviewing feasible alternatives. Next slide, please. This map shows the 500-foot radius, and it also shows, the following slide shows that within the Upper Valley, on the west side of the Rio Grande, there's only 10 commercial properties of any kind within the city. The nearest ones are more than half a mile away. The next slide is the Personal Wireless Service Facility Policy Guide, which was adopted at the same time as the new ordinance. The next slide shows three quotes from this policy guide. "These guidelines are intended to provide the applicant and City Council with a basis for determining whether or not a proposed facility complies with the intent of the applicable code provision. The purposes of these design guidelines are to assure a degree of predictability and consistency in the review process. The guide is to be used as a supplement to formulate recommendations and make decisions on new PWSF applications." If we continue to the next slide, which is slide 14, we actually have a snippet from that policy guide stating, "For locations within or adjacent to residential neighborhoods, bell towers may be more appropriate to lessen the impact on nearby residents, and churches are specifically mentioned." There's a picture of a facility very similar to ours, and it says, "The facilities above blend in more naturally with the adjacent development and do not appear drastically out of place with the existing permitted uses of the underlying zoning district." What I'd like to emphasize in closing is that the objection here from many of the residents is to the structure itself. The structure has been designed in complete compliance with what the city put forth as a guideline in several documents adopted by this body as to what is appropriate for a residential area.
Thank you, Mr. Romano. Mr. Romano, you've reached the three-minute limit, sir.
I, I encourage you to look inside your packets at the existing facilities in Albuquerque and the photo simulation.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. The final speaker is Ms. Beatriz Garza. Ms. Garza, good morning. You have three minutes.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, hi. Good morning. My name is Beatriz Garza, and thank you for, uh, I wasn't able to unmute the first time. Uh, this is the same issue as before. This big company that has money, as we can see, is seeking to place a cell tower in our middle-class neighborhood when they really can find another place. Like we said, this neighborhood has no issue getting reception there. None of us do. If we would, we wouldn't be opposed to it. If this cell tower is approved, the people in this neighborhood would be left without a choice. Some of us, some of us cannot afford to move, especially in this time of COVID, with the high cost of housing on the rise. Some people like the city life, others like the country life, and that's fine. For us, we chose an area where you can look out at these beautiful mountains and see the horses, and there is hardly any traffic coming in and out of our neighborhood, and where cell towers don't interfere our, with our view or the closeness of our homes, because I noticed they didn't show any of our homes there and how close it is really to our homes. And now this choice might be taken away from us. The neighborhood has been there first. This company can build in an area where future neighborhoods are about to come up, and they can get that information from you guys. Where the cell towers can be there first, and then people can decide if they want to live in this neighborhood where there is a cell tower near it or in it. If we had the kind of money that this company has, then we would also be able to hire people to do research for us in our favor. This company does research only to side with them, not to represent where else they can put this tower, because they know they have an area where they can put it. If they wouldn't have this area, they would have to be forced to find another area, and they would find it. They have a church that needs money and is willing to get paid, but they are offering it, which means they don't have to look any further to save money. How sad that hardworking El Paso people who have invested money to buy a decent home in a nice quaint neighborhood with a beautiful view is being forced by this wealthy big company to want to take their tower. They are just taking the easy way out. And yes, we have plenty of concerns, and some of the concerns we cannot voice. When they can afford to place this tower as elsewhere, as I said, cell towers can reach from far away in miles, and we see this when we're traveling in remote areas. It doesn't have to be put in a neighborhood where homes are close by. We don't need the cell towers, I said before. We get good reception. But little by little, they are forcing their way into these neighborhoods and these schools and these churches, and they don't care about the people who live there or attend there. All of you are here for the people of El Paso, and I hope all of you take into account the people in this area. Verizon is here to do business and to make money. This company has everything to gain, and this church does too. And we have nothing to gain. I would ask you that you please take into consideration what we have all said, and we do have plenty of concerns. Like I said, many that we can't mention at this time. Please, hear our concerns, and we have been working hard together. Even in these times of COVID, we found ways to raise petitions, and we got creative on how to people not to get close to each other. And so we're asking you to please hear us out. Thank you very much, Council. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Prine.
Thank you. That concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Yes, thank you. Um, so I would like to, uh, take the time to, to read one letter that I think is indicative of a lot of the, the very real and reasonable concerns that this community has expressed, um, not just this year or at the CPC of this year, but also in 2018, as well as at CPC in 2018, when the council and the CPC also unanimously denied, um, this application and this applicant, um, at the same time. Um, so I would like to read this, and then I have a slide. Ms. Prine, if you'd like to bring that up after I read this. So, um, you know, very reasonable concerns that are here are relating towards the aesthetics and the rural, uh, character and, and value of the Upper Valley. Um, this cellphone tower, while, while, um, shorter than what was proposed in 2018, is still twice the size of the church that it's being proposed to be, being located on, as well as being much larger than any other structure uh, within a few miles of the Upper Valley. So, um, I'd like to read this le- letter by, um, Ms. Claudia Simpson. "My name is Claudia Simpson. 2018, myself and other residents of the area attended your town meetings at Albertson's on Mesa to discuss our concerns of Verizon wanting to build a cell tower at the Rey del Reyes Church on Upper Valley Road. We really appreciate your tenderness to our concerns as well as your support to deny such a proposal in 2018, and as your constituents, we're asking that you be our advocate and voice for the proposal of the tower once again to be denied this coming Tuesday, July 20th. Fortunately, the issue has come again, to the table again, and the community and I are asking to deny the building of the Verizon cellphone tower once more this Tuesday, July 20th. As of today, you should have heard or received the petition sent by Ms. Carlo, Ms., Mr. Carlos Garza, indicating opposition of the tower." Here are those, those petitions right here. As you can see, there's a number of, of pages on here as well. These are all, um, not the petition that was there from 2018, but this is a petition that has been brought up by Mr. Garza and his neighbors, um, just over the last few days, if not week. To continue the letter, "My hope is that you will deny the proposal to build a cellphone tower once, the cell tower once again. No means no, and this was expressed in motion back in 2018 and is still being voiced now. There's nothing new that Verizon and/or the church are bringing this time around to consider. They're both just wanting to get their interest granted for the motion, for their own self gain. We residents of this area do not want this horrible 40-foot tower to be built. While Verizon and the church have business and economic interests within our community, our interest is not having this hideous tower built that will not serve nor improve the aesthetics of our community nor meet our needs. We are the true stakeholders here. We are the taxpayers and residents of this community. As our district representative, I encourage you to visit the area, and you will now, you will see how building such a tower aesthetically will not make an improvement. You will also see how vacant and unkept the church keeps its property. The disconnect is obvious. No one in the community has ever seen outreach on their behalf. The church leaders and members do not reside near the property either. There are no gains for the community here. I ask that you reject the proposal again, as it was done in 2018, this coming Tuesday, July 20th. Please honor our request. Thank you and advance your time. Respectfully, C. Simpson." So I think a lot of the concerns that are raised by Ms. Simpson, I think are still true. Again, um, it is well within our purview to have concerns based upon community input as well as, uh, the disruption of the scenic and residential value of an area. I think in terms of our ordinance as a whole, um, the large concern that we hear from residents, not just in my district but in others, are not necessarily whether a cellphone tower looks like a cellphone tower or a giant Alpine spruce tree, or a giant saguaro cactus, or even a church steeple. The issue is, um, the location of a cellphone tower in relation towards a residential, um, area. And that is the largest concern that we hear. And so if there's something that we need to do to amend our ordinance to provide, uh, clear, clearer and strict, stiffer guidance relating to, um, location near residential areas and encouraging an area closer towards a commercial area, then that is something as a council that we should be looking at as, um, folks that make policy for our community. If, Ms. Prine, if you could just bring up this map before I, I read into the record, um, motion denied, that would be great.
IT's bringing that up, sir.
There it is. So I believe that this is, I don't know if you can, you can, uh, zoom in a little bit. This was, uh, something that, uh, found from the, uh, the, I guess, San Antonio-based lawyer who brought this up here. So you can see where the location is over here. Um, along Art Craft Road, there is, um, there's the U- Upper Valley, which is about, again, a little bit over a half mile. There's, um, a number of different commercial sites that I, you know, wonder how much they've been explored. In addition to that, um, just recently, we did a rezoning, um, for an area directly on Art Craft and West Side that, again, would be very close, if not within that half-mile area. In addition to that, there's an old, um, there's an old sort of country store on Gomez and West Side as well that could be looked at. Um, again, I think that there's other opportunities and other options for other areas in this part of our city that can be within that close to half-mile range, um, as, and, and alleviate a lot of the, a lot of the concerns that we're hearing from residents in this area. So, um, that is something that I wanted to bring up there, and I think it would, um, alleviate some of those concerns that are there. Um, to date, been part of one public meeting, um, relating to the applicant for this. And so I'd like to make a motion to deny, and that the El Paso City Council has considered the information contained in the application and presented by the applicant, the concerns of the citizens near the proposed site, the availability of nearby possible commercial sites that can potentially provide the same or similar service to the area, the greater opportunity for co-location on taller towers and commercial sites. We conclude the application for permit at the proposed residential zone, zone site is not consistent with the El Paso City Code, which prefers citing cell towers in commercial districts where possible. The application fails to conform to the requirements for personal wireless service facilities in Section 20 dot 10 dot 455, and fails to conform to the requirements for special permits in Section 20 dot 04 dot 320 of the code as the request fails to follow the minimum requirements necessary to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare. The council now makes the following findings in denying this request in order to preserve the general intent of the personal wireless service facilities in Section 20 dot 10 dot 455 and in Section 20 dot 04 dot 320, special permits in order to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare. One, the property on which the facility is proposed to be installed is located at 5901 Upper Valley Road, which is in the Center Court Residential subdivision. A commercial subdivision is located approximately a half mile away to the north, and commercial subdivision is located approximately 1.6 miles away to the south from the proposed residential site. Two, the intent 20 dot 10 dot 455 of the El Paso City Code is to prefer commercially zoned locations for the placement of cell tower facilities and discourages placement in residential areas. Three, the community has provided reasonably founded concerns requesting placement of this tower in the nearby commercially zoned locations. Four, a commercially zoned tower would allow for increased height. A higher tower in a commercial zone would provide more co-location opportunities. Five, the community has provided reasonably founded objections of the proposed tower facility used solely by Verizon Wireless, thus raising the issue of co-location. Six, the intent of 20 dot 10 dot 455 of the El Paso City Council includes a preference for towers that co-locate with multiple providers. Seven, co-location provides more opportunities for improved service through more providers on a single tower. Eight, the community has questioned the need for improved service in the area citing their current, quote, excellent reception. Nine, the proposed site does not conform to the rural character of the neighborhood that is primarily composed of single and two-story structures. And 10, it is the council's opinion that Verizon Wireless has not reasonably addressed whether commercial zoning to the north and south, um, may provide opportunities for the same or similar coverage in the general area. And if there is a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Uh, we do have, uh, Representative Rivera would like to speak. Representative Rivera, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
Basically, what I wanted to ask, uh, the staff is how close are these residents to, to the, uh, to the proposed cell tower?
So again, for the record, Captain Smith with planning inspections, um, let me bring up my, uh, my map again, but it is directly abutting in this property. Um, let me bring up my map. So the, the property in, in question here is the, um, the one outlined in this dash gray, or dash black line, and residences are directly abutting.
Okay, and, and, uh, those are excellent points that the Mayor Protem just brought up. Uh, is that why CPC didn't, didn't approve them either?
Um, they, they generally felt that it was not in character of the neighborhood. It was, it was large, and they did take into account the, the concerns of the public. Again, as staff, what we look at is we look at the approved policies and requirements of the code, and that is the basis of our recommendation. And obviously, as City Plan Commission and City Council, they, um, y'all take into account, um, other aspects, um, which include public, public input, feedback.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Representative Rivera. Um, Representative Hernandez? Representative Hernandez, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, no, I would just, I just wanted to, um, thank all of the speakers for sharing your input and concern. Um, th- these concerns that they have are no different than the concerns I've had for the past two years. If you look at my, um, voting record, I have consistently voted against any, uh, personal wireless towers and zoned, uh, residential zone properties. Um, I'm happy that the, the group there are organized and can come to council and convey their concerns, but I would ask this council to reconsider the policy that was adopted last year and bring forward a policy that's going to, uh, protect residents with their concerns. Uh, it's not fair that, um, if this, if this passes, what about all of the other towers that we've approved in residential areas? So I ask for your consideration to keep that standard consistent across the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And without Ms. Prine, we have a motion and a second. Thank you, Representative Hernandez.
Yes, Mayor, there is a motion and a second to deny the special permit on that motion. Mayor Protem Schwartzwein.
So I just wanna, again, uh, just piggyback on what Rep. Hernandez said, and I do think that if there is way to look at, at additional restrictions, um, that we can have in terms of residential areas, in terms of some of these sort of loopholes, uh, with different properties, I think we should look at that and updating the ordinance, uh, for that. The fact is, is that overwhelmingly, the, the issue that we're hearing is not just based on aesthetics. It's also with, with the location of it being so close to, uh, residential areas when commercial can be, can, should be preferred, uh, in almost all situations relating to, uh, cellphone towers. Um, and with that, I vote yes to deny.
Thank you. Representative Vanello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Um, Representative Schwartzman, can you just clarify, was the motion to deny?
Yes.
Motion to deny. Okay, so I vote yes.
Thank you. Molinar?
Just also, I want to be clear, the motion to deny, I vote yes.
Thank you. The motion is to deny is read into the record by Mayor Protem Schwartzwein. Representative Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Mayor, I had texted you. I had a question.
Uh, I don't have, oh, there it is. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Representative Rodriguez. Will we tell Representative Salcido, go ahead and vote, and then we'll go to Representative Rodriguez?
Aye.
Representative Rodriguez, and, um, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Um, I have a, a, a quick question for our city attorney. Um, I just wanna make it, I wa- I was a little bit unclear. If we deny this, does this mean that, I'm sorry, the company can still go and do basically whatever they want, however they want, wherever they want?
Uh, n- no, ma'am. They would still need to apply depending on the height of the tower, whether that would come back to council or not. There are some areas in the code that allow these towers by right, but those are primarily in commercial zones.
Okay, and, and can the, this company, um, come back and, and sue City Council for denying?
That's a, that's a possibility if they choose to go in that direction.
Okay. Thank you. And, uh, actually, sorry, one more time, what was, what was the motion?
The motion is to deny the special permit?
Um, no.
Representative Rivera?
I'd just like to say that we, we do have a, a, a good policy in place. It's just added protection. We need to add added protection for the residential, uh, areas that are cons- that are concerned, that, that we brought up by some of my colleagues. But the, the current ordinance that we have in place, uh, is needed for El Paso so that we don't have these ugly cell towers coming about. Uh, and with that, I just have to say, uh, I, I also vote for denial. I, I also vote for denial.
Thank you, Representative Lizarra.
Aye.
And the motion to deny passes with seven affirmative votes. Representative Rodriguez voted nay, the motion to deny does pass. The next item is number twenty-seven, and this is a public hearing on an ordinance granting a special privileged license to El Paso Independent School District for the maintenance, use, and repair of an existing underground tunnel encroaching with a portion of Arizona Avenue between Kansas and Stanton.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve item number twenty-seven. There's no public comment on that motion. Mayor Pro Temp Schwartzman.
Aye.
Representative Vanello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Molinar?
Aye.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Lizarra?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. The next item is number twenty-eight. This is a public hearing on an ordinance authorizing the dedication for the use of the public as a right-of-way, ten point one nine acres of land between south of Liberty Expressway and west of Purple Heart Highway.
All right, are you okay with that, District Two?
Is there a presentation for this?
Yeah, I made a motion, I didn't know you guys didn't hear it. I think I was muted, I apologize. So, motion to approve, but also-
Second.
To see the patient, thank you.
IT, will you bring up the presentation on item twenty-eight, please?
Good morning, um, Armita Martinez with Planning and Inspections. Let me, so... Item twenty-eight on the agenda is Constitution and Burt Williams Right-of-Way Dedication. Um, these streets are located, uh, south of, uh, Liberty Expressway, or SPUR six oh one, and west of Purple Highway. Next, please. This is an aerial view of the existing streets. The applicant is requesting to dedicate a little over ten acres of land as public right-of-way. Currently, the area is improved and functions as right-of-way, but it has not been formally dedicated as public right-of-way. So this request will formalize the dedication. Next, please. This is a survey of the streets. Um, Constitution is north-south, Burt Williams east-west. Next page. And this is the continuation of Burt Williams. Next, please. And these are photographs of Constitution. Uh, they're looking north and south. Next, please. And these are views of, uh, Burt Williams. They're both looking, looking at an easterly direction. And that concludes my presentation.
There is a motion and a second to approve. There is no public comment on this item. On that motion, Mayor Pro Temp Schwartzman.
Aye.
Representative Vanello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Molinar?
Aye.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Lizarra?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. The next item is number twenty-nine. This is discussion in action that the city manager be authorized to sign a two-year on-call agreement for professional services to perform civil engineering services on a task-by-task basis with CEA Engineering Group, Inc., and Danenbaum Engineering Company.
Motion to approve?
And we do have public comment on this item. Mayor, may I call that speaker now? Thank you. We have Mr. Jose Reyes. Mr. Reyes, star six, please, to unmute your telephone. You have three minutes, sir. Mr. Reyes, you're on mute, sir, star six. Mr. Reyes, okay, your, your telephone is unmuted now. You have three minutes, sir. Mr. Reyes? Mr. Reyes, we can't hear you, sir.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, that's better.
Okay. I'm just, uh, I just called in, I just signed up in case there's any questions from, from myself. I am the office manager for Danenbaum Engineering here in El Paso, and I'm just really here in case any, any questions from, from, uh, from, uh, from Danenbaum.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. And, and in case there's a question off the line.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, Mr. Reyes is only there in case there's any questions.
That, um, concludes-
That concludes public comment on this item?
We have a motion and a second.
Yes, sir, there is a motion and a second to approve. Item number twenty-nine. On that motion, Mayor Pro Temp Schwartzman.
Aye.
Representative Vanello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Molinar?
Aye.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Lizarra?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. That brings us to the end of the agenda. At this time, may we have a motion to recess until noon for call to the public?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to recess until noon in order to conduct call to the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No, I mean, I, I-
Thank you. And the meeting is in recess until noon at ten thirty-six AM, and we do have ten speakers for call to the public. Thank you.
...
Move to reconvene.
Second, second.
There's a motion and a second to reconvene the regular city council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the meeting is back in session at twelve noon. We're on call to the public. The El Paso City Council is a local government body charged with serving all of the citizens of the city, and the meetings must be, must be focused on the meeting at charge. The city council meetings are public meetings under the Texas Open Meetings Act. Public comment is an accommodation and not a requirement of city council. All persons in attendance are expected to display civility and decorum that is respectful to other persons without the use of insulting, profane, threatening, or abusive language. Public comment will not be used for personal attacks against a person or group's character or integrity which are not pertinent to city business or may any member of the public use this forum for political statements or campaigning. Please note that during call to the public, the city council may not deliberate or decide any subject that is not on the agenda. However, council may propose that a topic commented on be posted on a future agenda. This afternoon, we have twelve members of the public that signed up to speak. The first person is Mr. Edgardo Moreno. Mr. Moreno's topic will be the need for more trees in El Paso to create more oxygen, shade, and a healthier environment. Buenas tardes, señor Moreno. Por favor, oprima el asterisco seis para activar el sonido. Le va a ayudar, el intérprete, señor Pérez. Le pido que, por favor, pause después de una frase para que pueda traducir sus comentarios.
No.
Va a tener seis minutos, señor Moreno.
Sí. ¿Puedo más?
Sí, sí, por favor, comience.
El proyecto que tengo, yo le deje un... con un, con un diseño para que tuvieran la idea de lo que yo quiero exponer.
Mas, IT, will you please bring up, um, Mr. Moreno's exhibit?
Disculpe, no, no, no le...
Estamos, este, poniendo su, el...
Ah, muy bien.
El documento que nos mandó en, en...
Mhu, muy bien.
Ya, ya lo estamos enseñando, señor.
Ah, bueno. Entonces, por el tiempo que es, lo voy a tratar de hacer resumido. Eh, el propósito mío, el principal propósito que, que traía era, eh, hacer aquí en El Paso, Texas, eh, un, eh, un, ¿cómo se llama? El forest, forest es, eh, un... Ah, se me olvidó en español. Bosque, un bosque, verdad? Es el primero, un bosque. Para que un bosque, como productor, principalmente como productor de oxígeno, verdad? Sabemos que, eh, la calidad de oxígeno que estamos consumiendo ya no es el cien por ciento. Hay mucho contaminación de monóxido y, y ya la calidad de, de oxígeno ya no es la misma.
Señor.
No me lo...
Señor, este es el intérprete, Jorge Pérez, señale. Por favor, empieza de nuevo y haga frases cortas para yo poder interpretar. Usted habla...
Okay.
Yo traduzco, y usted sí puede seguir después de mi traducción.
Okay, muy bien, ajá, okay. Bueno, el propósito principal...
The principle, uh...
Is... Ah, es, eh, crear o hacer bosques.
Eh, forest?
Bo, boforens, ajá. Eh, que productores para producir oxígeno.
To produce oxygen?
Mhu, debido a que la calidad de oxígeno que está en el medio ambiente...
Due to the fact that the oxygen available in the, uh, environment...
Ya no es, eh, el cien por ciento puro.
It's no longer a hundred percent pure.
Entonces, está, eh, hay mucho monóxido de carbono y otros contaminantes.
There's a lot of carbon monoxide and a lot of contaminants.
Mhu. Entonces, eh, la preocupación es, eh, la calidad de oxígeno que estamos, ah, consumiendo.
So the preoccupation is the ca, the quality of the oxygen we are consuming?
Mhu. Ese es el paso número uno, es más importante.
That's the first step.
Mhu. El número dos, paso número dos...
Number two.
Hacer el, el forest en forma de un laberinto.
To make the forest into the shape of a labyrinth?
Ajá, ¿por qué?
Why?
Porque, eh, eh, en forma de un laberinto poder atraer el turismo.
Because with a labyrinth layout, it would attract the public.
Mhu. Okay, el número tres...
The number three.
Eh, le hice en forma de una U.
Is to make it in the shape of a U.
Pensando en el nombre de Estados Unidos, vea, eh, de, de Norteamérica, va? Todo el, el nombre.
Thinking about the name of the United States of America, USA, the name.
Ajá. Entonces, eh, mi idea es que El Paso, Texas sea pionero de, de este, ajá.
My thought is for the, eh, for El Paso, Texas to become the pioneer.
Mhu. Entonces, para que otras ciudades puedan realizar así de la misma manera...
So that other cities can, uh, create in the similar manner.
La siguiente letras, por ejemplo, la L, que continúa.
So that, uh, other cities could start, for example, the letter N, which is...
O, eh, la I, ajá, la I, la T, la E, etcétera.
The I, T, E, etcétera.
Mhu. Esto, esos son los tres puntos importantes, verdad? Ahora, en el, el, ajá, diga.
There's three important points.
Mhu. Y, ah, como vemos en el croquis, o en el diseño...
And we're gonna accommodate it to the design.
Está condicionado...
¿Puedo repetir, señor?
Eh, está acondicionado o diseñado con bancas de garden, de...
It's designed with garden benches.
Que son los rojos, los color rojo, los color rojito.
That are red, indicated in the...
En... Ah, en entrada hay una fuente de agua.
And in the center or the entrance, a water fountain.
Ajá, hay un toilet, vea, en una esquina. Y está la entrada y esa misma la salida. Este puede ser remodelados con, según la, la exigencia.
That's, uh, the entrance and the exit, and that would be, uh, uh, formed depending on the requirements.
Mhu. Entonces, ahora bien, en los puntos verdes, los puntos verdes...
The green points.
Son los árboles.
Are the trees. Are the trees?
Mhu. Entre punto y punto, entre cada punto verde...
From each green point to the next green point?
Llevarían, por ejemplo, una planta de oleanders o otra arbusto.
It could have, for example, an oleander plant or something else?
Para formar, para formar bien el, el, lo que es el laberinto, verdad?
To complete the design.
Mhu. Entonces, ajá, eh, entonces, este es mi, mi plan, verdad? Tres pa, tres puntos importantes.
That's my point and the, uh, three important points.
Sí, pero el, la, ajá, pero el más, el que, el más importante para mí es producción de oxígeno, verdad? Que es el forest.
But the most important point for me is the production of oxygen.
Gracias, señor Moreno. Sí, gracias, señor Moreno. Ya se terminó su tiempo. Gracias.
Okay, bueno, gracias.
The next speaker is Mr. Ron Como. His topic is City's Animal Services HAZ program. Mr. Ron Como, star six, please, to unmute your telephone. He will be followed by Mary Gonzalez, followed by Barbara Valencia. Good afternoon, sir. You have three minutes.
Okay. Uh, I want to start out with a question. If Haas is so good, why doesn't Austin City Shelter have this plan in place? Um, and why is it when someone gets a call number and they try to file a complaint about being told to put the dogs back, you and your management say that number doesn't exist, and this has happened several times? Saturday, Dwayne Peters took a box of puppies he found on fifty-four in a box to the shelter. They refused to take them in and didn't even offer to give them Parvo d'Estepper shots. Considering Parvo and d'Estepper is huge this year, but I, I guess that's six less for them to account for if they die. Uh, Sunday, July eighteenth, two soldiers spoke with Crystal at eleven sixteen Sunday. They found a stray at the mall and tried to surrender the dog to Crystal. She kept telling them to keep the dog, and they had to find the owner. Even after the soldiers told her they live in the barracks and can't keep the dog, she gave them a list of rescues and continued to refuse to take the strays. Also said, "It's your problem. Animal Services is not taking in dogs." Why is it we can't get three-one-one records? Supposed to take fourteen days, and we have been waiting months. No excuse for this. Animal Service has a video out to get new five-oh-one-C-three rescues. I find it amazing. We had enough rescues in twenty-nineteen to move the dogs out of the shelter, and now when they're doing a third of what they did and take, they need more rescues. What happened to the rescues they had? Are they like me? I have no rescues at my house. That is the first time in six years I don't have rescues. Um... Okay, yeah, one of the things that, that's kind of aggravating is, is they're telling people at the shelter when they're trying to turn dogs in, they can't record the conversation. They say it's illegal. This isn't true. You can check with your legal department on it. They have every right in the world to record any conversations between them and a city official or a city employee. Um... I, I, I still find it really amazing that we have all these complaints on El Paso lost and found, talking about the shelter and things they're doing, including not taking the dogs. But yet, every time we talk to a city official, everybody tells us that they are taking all the strays. So I, I, I don't understand where the communication problem is. Maybe that's what they want. Um, for example, just for a problem, on the El Paso Dog Cats page, uh, July nineteenth, Ashley Bell rehoming a puppy twelve weeks old, or, yeah, twelve weeks old. She's trying to rehome these twelve-week-old Golden Labs, not vaccinated, not spayed or neutered. And what do you think's going to happen to those six puppies? How many more puppies are going to come out of this litter because it wasn't picked up and taken care of in the first place? We have a huge problem with not spaying and neutering strays i- in the city of El Paso. Animal Services used to do a great job. They were spaying and neutering dogs for rescues, but, uh, Paula decided that wasn't necessary and put the burden back on to the rest that we do not...
Thank you, sir. You've reached the three-minute limit.
No problem.
Thank you. The next pe- person in the queue is Ms. Barbara Valencia. Ms. Valencia's topic is also the City's Animal Services HAZ program. Ms. Barbara Valencia, star six, please, to unmute your telephone. Good afternoon. You have three minutes, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to talk about El Paso Animal Services, Austin Pets Alive, and the HAZ Plan's eight stages to animal genocide. The first stage is classification. You distinguish between us and them. It's Animal Services versus the pet owners and the public. Animal Services versus the rescues, and Animal Services versus the animals themselves. The second stage is symbolization. Give names to the classifications. So they have given names to these animals such as stray dogs, lost pets, unwanted animals, and dumped dogs. The third one is dehumanization. Animal Services says they're just dogs. They don't have the capacity to feel pain, and they can fend for themselves. The fourth stage of animal gen- genocide is organization. Genocide is always organized. El Paso Animal Services has organized, in conjunction with Austin Pets Alive and the HAZ Plan, to commit animal genocide in our city. The fifth stage is polarization. Drive a wedge and drive the groups apart, lend to the rescue groups, the public, and the pet owners. And you use that with intimidation and silencing at the center, which affects the animals and produces the goal of animal genocide. The sixth stage is preparation. The animals, which are the victims, are identified and separated out. What Animal Services has done is they separated them into categories of close intake to all healthy and stray, lost dogs. They say kennels are only for the sick and injured animals, and also no kennels are to be used for strays, owner surrenders, or other intake of animals. The seventh stage is extermination, and that is the legal killing. And it is extermination to El Paso Animal Services, Austin Pets Alive, and the HAZ Plan, because they do not see or believe the animals as victims, and it also is resulting in revenge, animal genocide. El Paso Animal Services is telling people that they will be euthanizing all the healthy stray and lost dogs brought into the shelter, and they are doing this as punishment and revenge for having to take these dogs in. And this is local government-sponsored animal genocide. The eighth and final, uh, stage of the animal genocide is denial. It is among the surest indicator of further episodes of animal genocide. El Paso Animal Services will cover up the evidence and intimidate witnesses. They will deny this is happening. They will blame the animals, the pet owners, and the rescues, and they will also block any investigations, and they will even destroy evidence. The city of Austin's mayor and city council members refuse to even entertain the idea of implementing HAZ at their municipal shelter called Austin's Animal Center for this very reason. They were not going to implement, support, promote, or have any form of animal genocide being done in their city. So it's up to El Paso now. We need to step up and end HAZ now. We need to stop the animal genocide in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Leti Benitez. Ms. Benitez's topic is also the City's Animal Services HAZ program. Ms. Benitez, star six, please, to unmute your telephone. Leti Benitez, star six, please, to unmute your telephone.
You hear?
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon. You have three minutes.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am. We can hear you.
Okay, this is, this is Leti, Leti Benitez. Yes. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Leester. My name is Leti Benitez, and I am a concerned citizen about what is going on here at Animal Services and the HAZ program. My question is, when will Animal Services open one-hundred percent, and when will they start picking up all of the stray, healthy and injured dogs? Why are the three-one-one operators telling citizens that dogs will be euthanized, and that they can no longer keep them in their home, and for them to find the owners, they will be euthanized? This has been going on since two thousand and twenty, and Paula Pell, who was then the director of Animal Services, implemented this program in conjunction when COVID, um, started. And where are we supposed to, as rescuers, put all of these stray animals in our homes? When you take an animal to Animal Services, they refuse to take in the animal, just like Ms. Barbara Valencia just mentioned. And then they give a list to the citizens saying, "Here, reach out to the rescues." Where are these rescues supposed to find all these fosters to put all these stray animals, healthy and unhealthy animals, on the top of the roof of their homes, in the garage? These are answers that we need to be, that we have questions, and we need answers to our questions. I am speaking here for the voiceless, which are the dogs, and no pun intended, but the city of El Paso is going to the dogs. I have told some of the rescuers, it would be wonderful if Mayor Leester and the city council members would just one day put on some jeans and put on their boots and go out into the desert, go outside a trap, go out and help the dog that is injured on the streets or the freeway. So you, this way, you would get firsthand idea of what rescuers go through and what's being implemented in your city. There are thousands and thousands of stray dogs in our city, and Animal Services is padding their numbers. Me, as an accountant, I would like to look at the book and to see intake and outtake. What did Paula Pell do with the money that she was allocated in the year twenty-twenty where she could vaccinate, where she could spay and neuter these dogs? I have that question. And I would like some answers as a concerned citizen. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Karen Washington. Ms. Washington's topic is also the City's Animal Services HAZ program. Good afternoon, Ms. Washington. You'll have three minutes.
Hello?
Hello, Ms. Washington. You have three minutes, ma'am.
Thank, thank you so much. Um, Mr. Mayor, I have reached out to you numerous times on behalf of my rescue, positive rescuers of El Paso, and I have yet to receive any response whatsoever. The HAZ program that is in effect in El Paso regarding, regarding found dogs, it's not working. Ramon at Animal Services is telling you differently, but I am one of the rescuers who is on the streets, in the desert areas, rescuing dogs that have been turned loose, tied up, and dumped in the desert areas because of this ridiculous program, and Animal Control not picking up all dogs. Why are we waiting for a tragedy to occur before we take this issue seriously? This program needs to go. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Sharon Miles Bonart. Her topic is Opportunities for Participation in City Meetings. Good afternoon, ma'am. You have three minutes.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Sharon Miles Bonart. Today, I'm suggesting the option of a hybrid meeting protocol for all city meetings. This hybrid protocol would include participation strategies of current meetings combined with what had been standard meeting protocols. These last few months have been incredibly challenging for all of us. Our city continually has been presented with overwhelming challenges. As each challenge has been met, new lessons have been learned. For the last several months, meetings for city council, districts, city boards, and city committees have been held using internet and call-in connectivity. These meetings have taught us that there is significant value in internet and call-in participation, to say nothing of the savings of time in commuting to and from meetings, extended opportunities to keep a distance for health reasons, and fingertip access to pertinent information accessible on the internet. When in-person meetings resume, I hope the city will use a hybrid protocol for all meetings, which would be a combination of the previously standard meeting form and the adoption of virtual internet and call-in participation in all meetings. A hybrid meeting protocol can provide for extended public participation and civic transparency. I hope you'll consider this as you go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mr. Rick Bonart. His topic is Bicycle Lanes. And IT, Mr. Bonart, did submit a hard copy of his presentation, which we have shared with you. If you can, please bring it up on the screen. Good afternoon, Mr. Bonart. You'll have three minutes, sir. IT will be bringing up your presentation.
And can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I hope you can see the first slide.
Dr. Bonart, you're coming up. It's not up yet.
Okay. I will wait for a second.
IT, can we straighten it out, please?
You know what?
It's up now, sir.
No worries. Just go ahead and, uh...
It's, it's up, it's up, Mr. Bonart. You can proceed.
Oh, okay.
I'm not seeing it.
Okay, that's fine. Well, they're bringing it up now. You can see it, okay, though? You can see slide one?
Yeah.
It's up, Dr. Bonart. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, so, um, this is, uh, the second, uh, bite of the apple on this issue. And I'm coming back today because it was recommended that I go ahead and participate in the bicycle committee's activity, um, when they were going to address this issue. And I did, and I was surprised that that issue was not available for, as an action item. So I'm bringing it forward to you in this manner. And I can tell you, I've learned some additional facts about this problem, which is an unsafe bicycle lane at Red and High Ridge. So if you'll go to the next slide, number two. Um, so this lane was moved and made it into an unsafe situation based on one single constituent request. And in fact, staff relied on an old twenty-seventeen traffic study to make the change. It was approved without any public vetting, and it was approved without the bicycle committee participation. And I can tell you, when they did participate, they did not approve of this. And the item was also rushed and constructed without any necessary supplies. So if you can go to the next slide... There you go. And at the bicycle committee, this was a slide that was presented, and it was their response to my complaint that they did not use NACTO guidelines when they made this change. And this was the, uh, example that they gave to show that, yes, NACTO treatment guidance was followed for Red and High Ridge. This was from the city staff's presentation. And I can tell you, that's not accurate, because as you see in this slide, beginning at the top, you have the curb. Then you have a turn and parking lane, if you'll go back to the previous slide. Oops. Hey, don't know what's going on. Okay, I'm not sure what happened to the prior slide. Maybe they can't hear me.
I don't know.
Okay.
I believe we can hear the mayor.
We can hear you, Mr. Bonart. Please proceed.
Okay, well, the, this is not the slide I'm peeking up. The one that I'm seeing that you're looking at.
Should be number three.
Mr. Bonart, you have ten seconds, sir, if you'd like to wrap up your presentation.
We request more, more time.
No, you know, that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonart. The next speaker is Mr. Sean Hamilton. His topic is Repeated Flooding Damage to Businesses. In council, Mr. Hamilton submitted an electronic submission of his presentation. However, we, it would require a suspension of the rules of order in order to allow it.
I move to suspend the rules of order to allow for the show to be presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to suspend the rules of order to allow the electronic submission of a presentation. All in favor?
Yes.
Anyone opposed? And the motion passes. IT, please bring up Mr. Hamilton's pictures. Just for the record, IT has scanned the documents to make sure that, that they're safe files. Mr. Hamilton, you'll have three minutes, sir. Please press star six to unmute your telephone. Thank you. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name's Sean Hamilton. I'm originally from Dallas, Texas. I've lived in Irving, Tarrant, and Dallas County. I worked in the water department for the city of T. I was working on con- contract here in El Paso and local area. When I met a señorita, we got married in twenty-ten, and she became my wife. I've made El Paso my home since twenty-ten. We got married in twenty-ten, and she became my wife. I've made El Paso my home since twenty-ten. I'm an apprentice at Gino's Body Shop located at fifty-six forty-five El Paso Drive, um, which has been in business for approximately twenty-three years here. He's called the Water Department many times over the years with no success as an apprentice. I got to see firsthand how it affected him and his other businesses on El Paso Drive. Um, John from Demo, John from Race Car Builders, Mike at the small bar here, the elderly at the apartments down the street. Fifty-six eleven El Paso Drive. Um, for starters, the Water Department needs to come, clean out all the gutters, grates on El Paso Drive so they can drain properly. There's a concrete drainage directly behind Gino's Body Shop, created by the city, which is in between the railroad tracks and the body shop. Now, the railroad tracks are about six foot higher than the floor of the body shop. When the water comes over the canal that was man-made here, it comes directly into the body shop. We spent hours yesterday draining the shop and shoveling mud, as well as they're still pumping out water from across the street. Um, there's five families just at Gino's Body Shop whose livelihoods were directly affected. We had to pump water, as I said, we have to replace some sheet rock, we have to do electrical outlets. The neighboring businesses are also having to do the same thing. Um. This is El Paso Drive, I mean, this is El Paso, Texas. Shouldn't there be more pride put into a street which bears the city name? Ms. Hernandez, this is your district. I've sent pictures of the damage and the water, ma'am, I hope you hear us. We're blue-collar workers, we feel we don't have a voice. The cost of repair and putting in preventative measures far outweighs the devastating effects we've had because of COVID for these businesses. I thank you all, and I'll thank you, Leester, I voted for you, you're doing a great job, and thank you, Council, for hearing me.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Mr. Colt Demores. Mr. Demores's topic is El Paso Police Department and Request for Funds to Test Misdemeanor Marijuana.
Counsel.
Good afternoon, Mr. Demores, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor. Um, Mr. Molinar, I just want to let you know that I sent you information that we had talked about, um, previously, uh, to your email yesterday. I also see seed, uh, Representatives Hernandez and Anello on it. Um, we need to stop, uh, we need to not give the Police Department seventy-two thousand dollars uh, to test misdemeanor amounts of marijuana. Uh, there's a reason the state doesn't have funding for this, they're really not important crimes. And now the, uh, Police Department wants to hire the crime lab they use, the same crime lab they use for murders and, um, really henuis felonies to test misdemeanor amounts of marijuana. It's not good use of money. Uh, this is the same crime lab that lost accreditation, um, some years back uh, for some shady tactics. I don't remember what they were, but I do remember them losing accreditation. Um, you know, this is, this is, it's out of control, uh, that they're, that they continue to arrest, uh, even with sight and release, um, in place. I think we need to make that a city ordinance to make it, um, enforceable. And, um, I think we just need to stop this funding and also make a sitting ordinance so funding like this in the future doesn't go to, um, to frivolous, uh, frivolous things like they want to use it for, for testing misdemeanor amounts of marijuana. Uh, thank you guys for listening to me. Um, I will be in contact with all of you. The rest of you, I will send the email to that I sent my representative, um, to show you a resolution that Austin City Council had passed, and now they're working on getting as a city ordinance to do the same thing, to stop their police department, um, from hiring a private lab. This is just frivolous spending across the state of Texas. We're trying to save money here, not waste it. Thank you guys for listening. Have a great day.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mr. Michael Castro. He will be followed by Mary Gonzalez, followed by Sarah Garcia. Mr. Castro's topic is We Must Deny the Seventy-Two Thousand Dollar Request by the El Paso Police Department. Good afternoon, Mr. Castro, you have three minutes, sir. Mr. Castro, star six, will unmute your telephone? Good afternoon, sir.
Hello, good afternoon, City Council. Um, so yeah, just to touch a little bit on what Colt was talking about. The seventy-two thousand dollars that's requested for the police funding to test for misdemeanor amounts of THC, um, it shouldn't even happen. Uh, seventy-two thousand dollars is a low estimate, or it's going to cost actually a lot more taxpayer money, uh, probably over a hundred thousand dollars plus. Um, and again, there's no reason for this, um, City Council. Currently, right now, I am at work, sitting at my desk, and I have jars of cannabis in front of me. I have concentrate, I have edibles, and I have anything that you can think of when it comes to marijuana, cannabis, sitting in front of me. I work right here in Southern Park, New Mexico, five minutes away from UTEP. There is no reason that we are still arresting people for misdemeanor amounts of cannabis. Guys, City Council, please pay attention. I serve cannabis to thousands of residents in El Paso who have medical cards. Okay, they have medical cards from other states, from New Mexico, from California. They reside in El Paso, Texas. I serve thousands of people in El Paso, Texas, cannabis legally in my job. I am a licensed marijuana employee, a cannabis employee. So the fact that we are still arresting people, we are still citing people for this plant, I know this is a Texas thing, I know that there's not a lot El Paso can do to decriminalize the plant themselves and legalize it. But what we are asking the City Council to do is to stop funding, right? When the Police Department comes and asks for seventy-two thousand dollars because they want to test for THC percentages, the same equipment that they are asking for to test for the THC percentage is the same equipment that dispensaries, like the one I work at currently, use to test for THC percentage, to relay that information to our customers, to let them know, hey, this has twenty-eight percent THC, this has twenty percent THC. And that's how we sell our cannabis, because that's what the consumers want. So what we're trying to do, what the Police Department wants to do to penalize people, right, to prosecute people, other states and other businesses like the one I work for are using that same equipment to make millions of dollars, thousands of dollars on a daily basis. So we can continue to hurt people, or we can help people. And I think as a City Council, I think as people, where we're, where we're, where we're at in, in this life today, twenty-twenty-one, with legalization happening all around us, we need to do something better for people, because this is just a plant. Don't forget that. If you are uneducated about this plant, educate yourself, because it is just a plant. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. We, we did have Ms. Mary Gonzalez and Ms. Sarah Garcia also sign up to speak this afternoon. However, their phone numbers are not in the queue. Mayor, that concludes call to the public.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Prandt. And with that, that concludes the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn the regular City Council meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? And the regular City Council meeting for Tuesday, July twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, is adjourned at twelve-thirty-six PM. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great day and a great week.
Bye-bye.